Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 1st, 2019 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Will the two members of Troop 435 please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? You're always ready, right? That's your motto? We just called on you five seconds ago. So here you go. After you, gentlemen.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you introduce yourselves for us?
So I'm Armand Rosemond.
And I'm Gianni Higginbotham.
Thank you very much.
If everyone will please remain standing for this evening's invocation, let us join in prayer for our city as we ask guidance and wisdom for tonight's meeting. 1961, President Kennedy spoke these words in his inaugural address. So let us begin anew, remembering on both sides that civility is not a sign of weakness, and sincerity is always subject to proof. Let us never negotiate out of fear, but let us never fear to negotiate. Let both sides explore what problems unite us instead of belaboring those problems which divide us. Let us in these chambers also remember the importance of civility and that respecting one another is the best compliment we can pay each other in the political arena. Let us pray that we are focused on that which binds us as Americans so that we can enrich the city we all love and call our home. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We ask that our military servicemen and women remain safe and return home safe. And we ask all this and pray for peace this evening and always. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the October 1st, 2019 City Council, the regular meeting of the Glendale City Council, was posted on Thursday, September 26, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item?
Under Presentation and Appointments, 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, October 8, 2019.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Before I preview the October 8th agenda, I'd like to announce that there'll be a special meeting of Glendale City Council, community meeting with Los Angeles County Supervisor Katherine Berger tomorrow, October 2nd, commencing at 9:00 a.m. in the downtown Central Library at 222 East Harvard Street. As for October 8, 2019, there are no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority. However, we have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority in the afternoon commencing at 3:00 p.m. There is one item, Director of Community Development regarding a program update and approval of marketing plan for monthly housing subsidy program for lower-income Glendale senior renters. That afternoon, again, starting at 3, we have a special meeting of the City Council. We have one report, Director of Community Services and Parks regarding Fremont Park renovation project. In the evening, starting at 6:00 p.m., we have several consent items. The first three from Police Chief, starting with accepting grant funds in the amount of $59,771 to be used to purchase software for the Verdugo Regional Crime Lab, followed by request to appropriate funds for the Verdugo Regional Crime Lab Improvement Project and the 2019 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program Grant, followed by Director of Community Services and Parks regarding appropriation of grant funds in support of the Senior Case Management Program. City Clerk, Award of Contract for Fiscal Year 1920 for legal advertising for the City of Glendale. Two items from Director of Public Works, services to provide abandoned debris and holiday tree supplemental collection services and Public Works Department Building Maintenance Contract, followed by City Attorney regarding legal services for city projects involving public works bidding, contracting, and construction-related issues. Finally, Director of Public Works and Fire Chief regarding renovations at Fire Station Number 26 and 28. Under action items, two items from Director of Public Works regarding City of Glendale Measure R Subregional Program Update and System Control and Data Acquisition Upgrade for the Doran Sanitary Lift Station, followed by Director of Community Development regarding Plan Review and Permit Extensions. City Attorney, Lobbyist Registration Requirements and Disclosure Requirements of Familial Business and Community Organization Relationships. Fire Chief regarding Annual Inspection of Occupancies Required by the State of California. Director of Human Resources, Memorandum of Understanding between the City and Glendale Management Association on behalf of sworn police managers. City Manager regarding Guidelines Related to the Administration of City Council Event Invitations and Commendations. And finally, Police Chief and Chief Information Officer regarding Annual Purchasing Contract for Citywide Uninterruptible Power Supply Support Repair Replacement and Preventive Maintenance Services. That concludes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. A lot of items. Are those going to be on consent or?
Good portion of them.
Okay.
Good portion of them.
Next item, please.
Next item under Presentation and Appointments is 3B, Proclamation Designating October as Walktober, Walk to School and Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month.
Thank you. Will those here for the Walktober and Walk to School and Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month come forward? How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
I have a proclamation, but I'm going to let you say a few words first.
I did want to thank, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members, the council for taking pedestrian safety, especially walking to school, as such an important measure. This is specifically important because tomorrow is International Walk to School Day. We do encourage the students of Glendale's public schools, their parents as well, to participate in this. This is a great opportunity for physical exercise, for social engagement with their peers, and to become more familiar with their neighborhood, a little more intimate familiarity with it, all of which have proven to be beneficial from a mental and physical health standpoint. After the proclamation, I'd like to invite our consultant, Pat Heinz, to talk a little bit more about our Safe Routes to School program and International Walk to School Day tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms. Heinz.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. We have 100% participation this year, as we did last year, but the interest has grown. And I have to say that it's a real reflection of the program that schools are taking this on as a major project. We're pushing them not just to do it once a year, but we're looking at every single month. If kids can walk to school on October 2nd with their parents, they should be able to walk to school every single day, which would do a great deal about decreasing congestion in front of our schools. I also wanted to share with you, should anyone ever think teaching children traffic safety is not an important issue, I know personally, I lost my daughter nine months ago from a traffic collision. She was killed. And this is a young girl that knew everything about safety, but it goes to show you that we're all vulnerable in traffic. It's an indiscriminate killer. And education is key to protecting our youth as well as our own families. And the last time she was here, she was in the stop sign costume. I doubt if you would recognize her, but she was dedicated to safety as a young 19-year-old girl. And a lot of schools have taken up the banter of dedicating their Walk to School to my daughter, Nora Rose Heinz. So all the work we do is a positive thing, can protect us as a community, protect us as parents, and individual drivers and residents in the City of Glendale. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Director of Student Services for Glendale Unified School District.
Well, Ms. Heinz, before we start, I would like you to know that we give you our deepest condolences, and we're so very sorry for the tragic loss of your daughter. I know, although nine months have passed, I'm sure it's still a very, a deep pain that you feel, and we share in your sorrow.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I'm Aguiel Mosekian, Director of Student Support Services, and I would like to thank the city for their support with Safe Routes, with International Walk to School Day. As Pat mentioned, all our schools are participating. We're very excited, and I would also like to thank the Glendale Police Department and Fire Department for their participation as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to say a few words since you're halfway there anyway?
Thank you so much. Yes, this year I had the honor to work with the Safe Route to School Project and working with Pat Heinz, and hopefully this year we have lots of students and parents supporting this project, the same as last year's.
Thank you. Thank you so much. As I said, I do have a proclamation, and it reads as follows. Whereas all the people of Glendale are pedestrians, and as pedestrians, we have a right to safe streets in our communities. And whereas the City of Glendale is taking an active role in improving pedestrian safety and reducing pedestrian-related collisions through its community outreach and Safe Routes to School programs. And whereas the B Street Smart Glendale Educational and Encouragement Campaign is the City of Glendale's effort to make city streets safe for all road users, pedestrians, motorists, and bicyclists. And whereas pedestrians will have the highest priority in urban design, transportation planning, and construction. And whereas the City of Glendale is continuously implementing safety improvements and initiating enforcement operations to enhance pedestrian safety citywide. And whereas the people of Glendale experience joys of walking as a source of transportation, health, fitness, and recreation. And whereas there are many beautiful destinations to walk to and enjoy throughout the city. And whereas parents, educators, community members, and leaders can support Safe Routes to School programs, which enable children to safely walk and bicycle in our community. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders from around the world are joining together to walk to school in October 2nd to promote walking to school in their communities. Now therefore, I, our Najarian Mayor of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Walktober and Walk to School and Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of all our citizens this month and throughout the year. I was going to let one of my colleagues award that proclamation, but since it was so long, I figured I deserved it. All those "whereas"s, that's on the record, I think. Whereas, what is next on the record on the agenda, Mr. Kasakian?
Under Consent Items, we have revision for 4E, the following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Is there a motion with the revised 4E?
I would like to move the items.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Karpetian, may I start with you?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as the pedestrian safety plan, I had some of the community members who called and asked about the plan that we had and why is it not being implemented at this point and tomorrow being Walk to School Day. I think it was appropriate for me to, you know, ask the staff to give me a report, and the summary of it is the pedestrian plan was prepared in conjunction with the South Glendale Community Plan and used the same environmental review for clearance. Unfortunately, the environmental certification requirement before council consideration was challenged along with the South Glendale Community Plan, and is before a judge now awaiting resolution of that lawsuit. So until we get that clear, that resolution cannot come back to council for a consideration. So I responded to a few people who sent me an email about this, asking about the pedestrian safety plan. Responded to them, but I just wanted the public to know about why that plan is not being implemented at this point. Last week, I was, last weekend, I was out of town, and I missed a few of the events, including the Glendale Circle Society's tour of homes. I'm sorry I missed it. It was, I know it was a great, great event, so next one, I'll try to make it. Also participated yesterday at Crescenta Valley's High School's Ally Week opening, which was a great event. I also want to make a motion and see if we can get a second on, you know, we had this carnival, what was it called, Days of Verdigo's?
Yes, sir.
In Verdugo Park. I want to see what does it take to bring that carnival back. It was a fun, a fun family event, and, you know, we all had a good time. I just want to know what happened to it and if it can come back, and just take a look at it, see if we can bring it back.
I'll support that.
You support it? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Devine?
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend the Icons of Architecture Home Tour, saw Mr. Kasakian there, but it was fantastic. Icons and the homes were spectacular. It was a sellout for the Historic Society, so congratulations to them. They got some good press from the LA Times. Today, I was up at Crescenta Valley High School as well for Ally Week, and I commend all of the kids that are involved in that program. The focus is on ensuring safe schools for all of our students, no matter who they are, who they love, and how they think. So those kids are really doing a great, a great thing for the school and for all of their friends, being allies with everyone. And I would, speaking of pedestrian safety and student safety, et cetera, I've been, I've become aware of a dangerous situation surrounding Benjamin Franklin Elementary School, and I'd like to, if I can have a second, to have an analysis of circulation, traffic circulation in that area, Sonora and some of the other streets. There are no sidewalks out there, so the kids have to walk in the streets to get to school. Lot of traffic before school and probably after school. When I was at Crescenta Valley High School this morning, actually was around, I was leaving around 1:00, and lunch hour was just finishing, and there were kids racing in their cars past that school. I couldn't believe it. I thought, you know, maybe if we can get some enforcement up there or by our high schools, just for a few minutes around, right after lunch. It was just unbelievable, kind of scary. But this situation involves elementary kids. It involves parents trying to get their kids to school, walking in the streets. If we can, if I can get a second on that.
A second, then.
Analysis, thank you, of the circulation. Thank you. Is that Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. I want to let everyone know that I missed the Glendale Historical Society Icons of Architecture. My physical presence is no indication of my lack of support for the Historic Society and their tour. Likewise, with the Ally program at Crescenta Valley High School, I was not able to make it today. I know there's a couple other events this week. I'll try to be there, but my absence from your program, again, in no way indicates an absence of my support for the anti-bullying, anti-gender bias programs that the high school and the young kids are putting out. I was able to attend the College Hills Homeowners Association breakfast. It was very well-attended. During that meeting, they raised the issue of whether they could begin to place license plate recognition cameras in their community to identify vehicles and, in particular, license plates of everyone that drives into the community. There is a community in the Sherman Oaks area that is doing this, and by doing so, they're able to find out who's coming into the community, especially in the event of any crime that occurs. They're able to go back and see who was there and identify the license plates. I mentioned this to the police, Police Chief, with the hopes that they could get started on it, but our department is so good, they are already starting on that. So I'm hopeful that in the not-too-distant future, we'll have a set of guidelines and a report from the police department and maybe our city attorney, if there's any privacy issues involved, on a pilot program where homeowners associations in those particular neighborhoods where they can monitor who comes in and who comes out, a process and a, hopefully a cooperative arrangement where the homeowners can assist in buying some of the hardware, and we can discuss liability issues and the placement of those cameras and who would retain the information on there. So it's an interesting bit of technology advancement, and as I said, the chief is already on top of it, and I think we would all look forward to seeing that come back.
A second, then.
Yeah, which is very good. The other item is, it's been in the news, everyone's heard about it, and I think Glendale should also take some action. This is the ban on vaping products, which are flavored to entice young people to attempt vaping. And the problem is that there are a surge in deaths nationwide on this vaping product. They're not sure exactly what's causing it. Other cities across the country are contemplating bans on this. I think Glendale should consider it and have a discussion as to whether we want to do that also, and that would be perhaps something the city. A second, then. The attorney might weigh in on as to our.
Yes.
Our ability to do so, as well as any other department.
And community development.
That feels necessary. I think we owe a fair discussion to our community on that.
A second, then.
Thank you. And the last item I have is some bad news, and this is regarding the loss of our beloved friend, colleague, and Community Services and Parks family member, Irma Hopkins. Irma passed away on Friday, September 27th, after a short but brave battle with cancer. She was a valued member of the Community Services and Parks family, working in the senior services unit for over 30 years. She started her career with the City of Glendale as a part-time employee in the early 1980s, working as a meal coordinator at the Spar Heights Community Center. Irma's exemplary work ethic and passion for the senior nutrition program led her to a full-time position as a community services coordinator at the Adult Recreation Center, overseeing the congregate meals program. Irma worked in this position until August 20th of this year, until her health no longer allowed her to continue doing what she loved to do. During her 30 years in the senior nutrition program, Irma was directly responsible for over 1.5 million meals served to seniors at the city's three meal sites. She was a mentor and role model for her fellow employees. Irma will be greatly missed, as her loss is deeply felt, especially by those who work with her closely. We thank her for her years of service to the seniors in our community, and I would ask that we adjourn the meeting in her memory. I have no other items. Any items from staff? Okay. Mr. Kasakian?
Mayor, while we bring up the cards for the next portion, because we did have a couple of cards for community event announcements, I will just mention that we did have the mock election at the Glendale Central.
Who won?
Library. Results are still being tallied, but we want to thank everyone who stopped by and checked out the new voting devices. We don't have statistics available just yet, but anecdotally, I was told by some of the staff that had been at the LA Zoo location the day before that ours was busier than the zoo. So there's something to be said for that, I guess, given the foot traffic, and while I was there, I did see people who were stopping in to vote, who had come to downtown Glendale to shop, had seen the signs, saw the radio stations doing their promotions, and decided to stop in. So to everyone who did participate in the first County of Los Angeles mock election, we thank you, and please stay tuned as we update the community on what changes are forthcoming.
Thank you.
I would like to add something to it. I participate in the election. It was very interesting, as far as I'm concerned, because I've been involved with elections. I reported on my TV station. This is absolutely easy to do, and if you make a mistake, like on your ballot, you make a mistake, then you don't know what to do, so you have to go back, ask for another ballot or however. This way, you can easily correct it. It was absolutely interesting. Hopefully, they come back again, and everybody can participate. This is, makes the life so easy that it's, actually, I was not expecting that. I thought that going to be kind of a complicated voting system, but it's very easy, very reasonable way to do it, and absolutely interesting. I mean, it was so much fun.
Thank you.
And the number one question we continue to receive, thank you, Councilmember Agajanian, is about the security of the process, and as you saw, there's a paper ballot that it gives you, you're able to look at, and then you submit. So there is a paper process, a paper trail to follow in the event that there are questions about any results or outcomes. And also, to reiterate what you said, whereas with a regular paper ballot, you may mark more bubbles than are allowable, this system does not allow you to move forward in the process unless you make those corrections and mark the appropriate number of offices or, you know, the appropriate number of bubbles you're allowed to. So it prevents that as well, so no one's vote will not be counted for an error of that sort.
Mr. Karpetian?
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian, when do you think we can have some report as to how many people participated in that two-day event?
We've asked the county. We, I can give you a rough number on the first day, but I wouldn't want to give it until we have confirmation as to what it was.
What was that rough number?
I want to say, maybe on the first day was just slightly south of 100 people that came in, but I don't know how many of them came in and actually voted, how many of them were there just to look and did not vote. So once we have those specific figures from the county, and we can compare them with other places, we'll provide that for council.
And is voting the new system, those new machines, you know, that the booth and the machine and everything, is there a way that we can have one here at the City Hall after the nomination period is closed, so people can come in and get themselves, you know, more familiar with the, with the new machine if they wanted to? Is there such a chance that would the county allows to keep one?
We have asked for a model. As you can imagine, everyone in Los Angeles County is asking for the same. It depends on availability and whether they're going to accommodate. The response we had initially received was that they're not giving these machines out for just simply display, but we are trying to maximize the number of opportunities we have in the Glendale to take them around, show them around, having one certainly at City Hall or some other publicly available place like the library, I think, would be helpful as well. So we will continue to work with them, and I'll give you an answer hopefully this week. I can email it to you and the rest of the council via the city manager's office as to the responses we're receiving, but Angie, Angie and Mazurkani in our offices in direct communication specifically for that reason, to see if we can have it, because as Councilmember Agajanian noted, it is a great and easy machine to use, but we still don't want people to feel tripped up when it comes time to voting with some of the issues that they may have. I will just add that and say. I will just add that and say, for those who like to procrastinate, we're trying to work around that as well by making the voting available at least 10 days before Election Day. That's what the county has insisted on with these vote centers. So the earlier people get out there and exercise their right or go to a location, I think the better off they will be, and we'll continue to update you.
Also, I would add, they can participate in election anywhere in LA counties, so.
Yeah, anywhere in Los Angeles County.
Doesn't matter if they don't have to be in Glendale or participate in the election in Glendale, so.
So I have one question, I know this item is on the agenda, is, just I have one question for clarification about voting outside Glendale or outside your jurisdiction. How would that work if, if I know Mr. Agaganyan's name and address and go somewhere, go to Van Nuys and vote on his behalf, and then he goes out and votes again here in Glendale? How would that work? And how would we know that, he doesn't know that somebody else voted on his behalf? How would we control that?
You know, I'm happy to bring and invite someone from the Los Angeles County Registrar's Recorder to talk about what their checks are and balances to make sure that there are no type of abuses of the system. I can only speculate that once you do, once a person has voted in a certain jurisdiction, then it's noted that they have voted, and obviously, that ballot for that election, if you're in Van Nuys, there's going to be only one ballot in that box that's going to have Glendale offices on it. If, for instance, and I hate to invoke Mr. Agaganyan's name, but since you brought him up as our example, we'll continue on that path, if he were to go to a Glendale location and say, "No, I am Mr. Agaganyan, and I'm the one who is here before you voting and votes," then obviously, the ballot in the other part of the city that's a Glendale ballot would be flagged, and there would probably be further steps taken by the county, but again, I don't want to speculate. It just, that seems as a logical way of pursuing that at that point. I can assure you that no one will be turned away from a voting location, even if there is a question about the person's, individual's ability to vote or status, they'll be able to vote provisionally still, and I will be happy to bring someone from the county or get clarification as to what their checks are to ensure that there is no type of misdeeds or voter fraud.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Vine?
Last question. We don't have locations designated yet in Glendale.
We have some locations designated, but it's ongoing. We haven't done final verification of all locations.
And we're not ready to announce any of them?
I would say that it's still premature to announce because we don't have all the locations yet. If I announce what locations we do have, some people in some parts of the city may not think that they are part of it, and it may cause a run on the county to ensure it. We can assure you that we, in the city clerk's office, are fighting diligently to make sure that Glendale gets its fair share of well-distributed geographic locations, and we are, in fact, working with the county directly and telling them, in fact, on some of the locations of what we think and what we know has worked best in the past versus some of the locations that they're leaning towards. However, they have certain considerations such as accessibility, how central it is to public transit, population density, ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act accessibility. Whereas, you know, we have been more flexible in our city elections with a lot of our locations. The county is very specific and wants to be uniform in all the locations that they select.
Okay. Thank you.
However, I will say that if any of you have any strong feelings or recommendations, please let us know. We have pushed for as many public city locations to be a part of that as possible.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go on to the community event portion of the meeting, and I have a card from Grant Hardiment and Matt Andrew.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Matthew Andrews, my colleague Grant Hardiment. We both have the honor and privilege in organizing our annual Glendale Fire Department Awards Luncheon. We're here this evening to give you a little insight about it and formally invite you and the members of our community.
Good evening. Like my colleague said, we're here to announce the Glendale Fire Awards Luncheon. It's upcoming on October 16th. It will be held at the, excuse me, it will be held at the Glendale Hilton at 11:30 to 1:30. This is an event put together between the Glendale Fire Foundation and the Glendale Sunrise Rotary, and it allows us the opportunity to honor the men and women of the department as well as various community members. We look forward to seeing everyone there, and thank you for your time.
So it's Wednesday, October 16th, 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the Glendale Hilton, and if you're interested in getting tickets, you can.
Go directly to our website, Mr. Mayor, or Glendale Sunrise Rotary. There's actually, on the flyer, there's a link on the very bottom there that'll take you directly to the website where you can purchase tickets. If you need additional information, you can also go to our website, and there's more information on there as well.
And the website is glundalefire.org or?
Or.
Do we have Rotarians on here?
Yes.
This is Sunrise Rotary.
The Sunrise Rotary is, yeah, correct, sorry. Go to the Glendale Sunrise Rotary website, that's where you can actually pay and RCP for the event.
Okay. Very good. We look forward to seeing you and seeing the great honors that we're going to bestow on some of your colleagues.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next card is for a three-minute general public comment. Tony Passarella.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and most importantly, viewing public. I'm here to announce a public awareness campaign, and this is day one, it's in regards to 5G rollout. A lot of people aren't aware of this, you know, Public Works had the, had the meeting, they had a town hall, and I kind of missed that, but people in Glendale, did you know that they're going to be erecting, installing, I think it's 24 5G cell transmitters in Glendale, mainly in neighborhoods? And I'm going to give you three addresses. 1150 Virginia, which is in back of the playground at Mark Keppel. Number two, 601 Glenwood, it's one block from Toll in the schools, one block down the street. And 700 Glenwood is right in front of Toll, right in front of Toll. Councilmember Divine, I know you were a coach. I coached three sports in my life, 13 years I've invested in, in the children in this community as a basketball instructor. I'm all about the kids. I'm all about the kids. And Mr. Garpety, I know you've coached soccer, and you have children too, and I know you wouldn't want one of these cell transmitters in front of the school that your children go to. I don't know where they go to. So I'm just going to give you a few facts here. In everything I'm going to present over the next several weeks, and by the way, I mean, I got a ton of stuff. I've been doing intensive research in this, so I'm, I'm going to come loaded for bear in the information that I'm going to deliver here, mainly to the public, because that's, who needs to be aware of this, is devastating. It's mind-blowing and devastating, and it's no joke. It's no joke. So here are a few facts, and I'm going to deliver nothing but facts, no speculation from me, it's all going to be factual, factual. So just spot, boy, I'm running out of time. 5G combines microwave and millimeter wave wireless radiation. There is no scientific evidence to support any claim of 5G safety. 5G requires significantly more cell towers that will increase involuntary exposure to wireless radiation in communities. Hundreds of scientists and public health experts from around the world are demanding a moratorium on 5G deployment. The $30 million, 10-year U.S. National Toxicology Program study found clear evidence of cancer from exposure to wireless radiation. My ask is this, my ask is that one of you would, would put this on the agenda and less voluntary ordinance near the schools, 1,000 feet, that's my ask, 1,000 feet from the schools. That's my, my ask, and I want the people.
Thank you, Mr.
To go to ehtrust.org, that's where you're going to get, start your research, ehtrust.org. Thank you.
Question. Thank you. Mr. Carpetian?
Mr. Passarella, you mentioned three different locations.
Yes.
Can you repeat those one more time?
Yes, 700, 700, it's right in front of Toll. It's Toll's address, it's 700.
How far away are they from each other?
Very close. 601 Glenwood is one block down the street on Glenwood, so 700 Glenwood is Toll. That's Toll's address, and then 601, one block. And then Virginia is, is a side street, and it's right behind the playground.
Thank you.
Absolutely unacceptable.
Can I ask a question from staff?
Yes.
I don't know if we have to agenda this, to ask this one question or not, but when, when they apply for cell towers, locations, submit their application, do they have to show that there is a need or there is a vacuum or there is a, how their coverage is to show that the coverage is not there? How does that work? I just wanted to understand.
Sure. Briefly, as part of the application process for any, either wireless cell communication or, or small cell, there's a requirement that the applicant provide an analysis, what's called a gap analysis, showing that there's a significant gap in coverage in the location that they're going to provide, post the tower or post the small cell. So that is part of the application, yes?
So for that gap analysis, they show that there is a, there's a gap in that area or there's a need in that area.
Correct.
To cover and have some overlap to, to be able to cover the entire area. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So I don't know, my question would be, how did it work until today, until before installing the cell towers? How did, how did they manage that, that gap? Because is it based on complaints that people say, "We don't have any reception"? Is it, how is it that the demand went up and they, they want to have more towers or more cell towers to have more service? Or how does that work? Because until they install these new towers, there's, I'm sure there's service in there, and I don't know who complained or if there's a huge complaint about having a, not having services in that area, so.
Yeah, that's a probably more complicated question. There's a, there's a number of technical answers that I wouldn't be qualified to answer at this time, but that's something certainly we can follow up on and provide a more detailed analysis of that question.
And there's an appeal that will be before the city council, if I'm not mistaken, and has to be agendized to be before the city council, and much of the questions that council may have related to this topic will be answered as part of that appeal process.
Okay, and one, one other thing, just for the public, you know, I received so many emails that I didn't respond to, and that's the very reason for it, that I didn't respond to emails, and one was you, Mr. Passarella, that if it gets appealed to the council, then we'll be in a position that it may create a conflict of interest because we already had that conversation with the people who are appealing. So one of the reasons I didn't respond to some of, some of your emails or other community members who sent me an email about, in this regard, was because we found out that there may be an appeal, so.
Mr. Agaganyan?
Is that where the towers can be? It's within our power to say yes or no, or, because there was a, once there was a law passed that states will decide somehow, and the cities were, were not participating on the location, maybe I'm wrong?
Also, a complicated question, one I probably could answer, but it would probably exceed the scope of something that's not on the agenda. I'm happy to, again, as Ms. Spears noted, we'll have the appeal, we'll have those discussions of the extent of the city's jurisdiction. We do have an ordinance that regulates these, and we, we analyze each of those under, under our ordinance. There are federal laws that impose restrictions and guidelines on how we judge those applications, and I wouldn't say, we don't have any authority, but there are certain guidelines we have to follow, and that's something I really couldn't get into in much detail here without having extensive discussion about it. But we've actually provided some material to you in the past, happy to go through that with you individually or wait until we have that discussion with the full council on that appeal later this year, I suspect.
Ms. Divine?
I just want to be sure that the, in the staff report that we received, that there will be the health risks discussed so that we have an idea of if there are health risks involved.
Well, there are limitations on the extent that we could discuss and, and use the health risk as a basis for decision-making, and we'll discuss that in the report as well.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any other cards. This portion of oral communications is closed. Next item, please.
Item A1 is Director of Community Services on Parks Regarding Maple Park Perimeter Fencing. A1 is Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing the Purchasing Administrator to Enter and Execute a Purchase Order Service Authorization with the Fence Store, Inc. DBA Glendale Fence Company and a not to exceed $2,115 with a 10% contingency for the purchase and installation of a perimeter fencing at Maple Park. Who's the resolution appropriating $75,000?
Ms. Spears?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, when the playground equipment at Maple Park was installed and unveiled a couple of months ago, and the community really started using the area adjacent to, to the street where the playground equipment is, council, in particular, Councilmember Garpetyan, as well as other council members, brought to our attention, because a lot of community members had brought the issue to their attention, as well as sending emails to, to the staff, letting us know that there is an issue related to safety and the opportunity for kids just to run out into the street because of the vicinity of the playground equipment, as well as children playing on the grassy area, their ability to go onto Maple. And so it was requested to possibly bring back an item to the city council for your consideration related to erecting a fence around the perimeter of the park. That cost, as the city clerk read into the record, is approximately $75,000. It's a not to exceed, and we would ask for your approval of this item, and Mr. Bulenikian is here to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Okay, are there any questions? Does anyone want to report from Mr. Bulenikian?
I would like to move the item. Second.
And just from the schematics of this, Mr. Bulenikian, this is not intended to be a security fence to secure the park, merely to prevent kids from running out into the flow of traffic or into the street.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, members of the council, it's not, it's, it's security fencing to prevent children from running onto the street. So we're going to be fencing off the entire perimeter, 1,000 linear feet of chain link fencing, black vinyl quoted, similar to what we have at Glorieta Park. It'll be 42 inches in height, really good quality. We will have a number of walkways open for the public to enter and exit the park.
Okay. Thank you. If there aren't any other questions, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zaga Janian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Garpetyan?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item?
ABA is Director of Community Services on Parks Regarding Mosaic Art Project at the Duke Magian Wilderness Park Through the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation. B1 is Motion Approving the Mosaic Art Project to Enable the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation to Raise Funds for the Project.
Ms. Spears?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we are here before you because of the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation would like to raise funds to erect a project, a mosaic project at the Duke, and in order for them to move forward with their sponsorship activities to raise $40,000, to be able to bring this art piece to the Duke Magian Park, we needed to come to the city council to ask for your approval for this nonprofit arm of our Parks Department to be able to move forward with this project. Mr. Bulenikian is here to answer any questions that you may have, and I believe we have members of the Parks and Open Space Foundation, as well as the Commission for the Community Services and Parks Department, newly minted members also here as well. With that, Mr. Bulenikian.
Is that a, is that an official name, the Duke?
The Duke. Duke Magian Wilderness Park.
I mean, it's a mouthful.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian, members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. The Bull.
That's what they used to call me in high school, by the way. So basically, Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation reached out to staff, they would like a, they would like to have fundraising opportunity, and basically. like a, they would like to have fundraising opportunity and basically, um, sell, uh, mosaic tiles, something similar to this, um, that will, uh, depict, uh, the wildlife, uh, up at Duke Magian Wilderness Park. Uh, the artist is here with us, uh, this evening too. Uh, she has worked on a, uh, large project at Franklin Elementary, uh, on, uh, the LA River, uh, depicting the LA River and the wildlife and the habitat of the LA River. Um, she's very familiar with, uh, the Duke and, uh, the project. Uh, we're hoping that , uh, city council will approve this, uh, project and, uh, sponsorship component. Um, if, in your packets, you'll see a, uh, rendering of, uh, the art, uh, with arrows pointing where the names will be, uh, placed, uh, as part of the mosaic. Um, if you have any questions, I do have, uh, members here from Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation and, uh, the artist herself to, uh, talk about the art.
Okay. Um, I do have one card. Let's start with the public. Arlene Vidor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Najarian, uh, city council members and staff. Uh, my name is Arlene Vidor. I'm a resident of Glendale and, um, I just wanted to, um, make a couple of comments. Uh, first about the parks department, to which, um, I personally am very grateful, as is the community I live in, because we've had a wonderful partnership, uh, in respect to the projects that go into the Adams Square Mini Park. Uh, and there's a very good collaboration between, um, across departments, uh, for this particular activity. Uh, back in July of two thousand eighteen, you approved the Urban Art Program Plan, uh, which is a big comprehensive plan that is fairly complex and long. Uh, it's divided up into sections that usually encompass about two years. And, uh, in the first two-year plan, which I believe was approved in December of the same year, um, one of the things that we outlined, uh, was that we have an RFP process that has recently moved forward a little bit. It's not done yet, but, uh, the RFP is still in progress. But the idea there was to bring in, um, somebody who could help us get the actual process of curating and selecting art established in the city. Because, as you know, our vision, long range, is to make Glendale an arts destination for people outside and inside the city and, uh, to elevate, um, not only the art itself and to, you know, come bring in the best, uh, contemporary artists working in the public domain, uh, but also to have a process that is current, uh, contemporary and robust. So, uh, one of those things involves, uh, having public calls, having a very transparent and robust selection process that includes maybe multiple people from multiple departments and also members of the community and members of the art community. Uh, this has not happened yet. Um, it's going to take a while to get these things started, especially since, um, securing an individual who can help make something like that happen is connected to an RFP, which hasn't gone out yet. But I just wanted to bring it up in the context of this project because I think it's really important for us, uh, as a city, to develop a very transparent, interdepartmental process that where we all work together, meaning we, the community, and the various departments that may be placing art in the community, uh, whether it's planning or parks or public utilities, of which there are many things that may fall into the art category that might be produced by public utilities as well. So I guess my question is, how, the fundraising is wonderful, but the question is, how does the process work? How did it work in this case? And how should it be working in the future? And I hope that the Arts and Culture Commission, uh, will have an opportunity to have an open discussion with other members of other departments in the city about this particular issue so we can advance our urban art program plan. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Mr. You? Sure. Mr. Garpetian?
Do we have a transparent process in selecting art and, uh, the Arts and Culture Commission and, uh, departments and, uh, utility box art? Everything else that goes on?
We're gonna switch it up. We're gonna switch it up.
I'm not sure what, sure.
To have a transparent process, so.
I'm not sure if your microphone is working. I think they're gonna.
It's not. We're gonna switch it out right now. Hopefully it'll work.
Swamp it out.
Okay.
I think we.
Mr. Garpetian's microphone is not working. Why don't you replace it? And can you repeat your question so we can make sure everyone has heard it?
Is this thing on? Yeah, okay. Uh, the question, the speaker mentioned, uh, a transparent process, you know, selecting art for utility boxes or, uh, the one that we have in, in Duke. And, uh, just wanted to understand how the process is and is it transparent? Is it not transparent? How, how does this whole thing work?
Sure. Depends.
With the Arts and Culture Commission and different departments?
Um, not knowing exactly, uh, what, um, Ms. Vidor was referring to in terms of a transparent process, um, it depends on the, um, item that we are looking at. Um, and in this case, if we're talking specifically about, uh, this item, it's a nonprofit organization. It's an arm of Community Services and Parks Department and it's a committee of folks, um, who do fundraising for, um, our parks department at the end of the day. Um, Onik Bulenikian can come up and talk about the process they had in terms of the selection, um, of this art piece, uh, for Duke Magian Wilderness Park and what that entailed. Um, but in no way are we or, um, any of the city departments trying not to be transparent. Um, I think, um, at times, uh, there is a, a bit of miscommunication and or misunderstanding about the role of our different commissions that we have in the city of Glendale, one being the Arts and Culture Commission and, and what their, um, actual role is in, in terms of the type of, um, advisement that they ultimately give on the arts at the end of the day. They are a policy advisory, uh, commission and they're advisory. Um, do all departments go to the Arts and Culture Commission to seek approval for projects that they may be embarking upon? Um, if, if we're going down a path within a particular department, um, that particular department, again, depending on the type of art that we are speaking about, may or may not, um, have the opportunity or the option to go to the Arts and Culture Commission. Um, holistically, I think ultimately, uh, the goal has always been to have, um, the opportunity to have this oversight commission in place. But I think the duties of the Arts and Culture Commission are, are very specific and, and they are written out. Um, and I brought that with me this evening based on a, an email that Ms. Vidor had sent, um, Mr. Schaefer today. And it's chapter two point six two of the Arts and Culture Commission and the G M C. And it's very specific in terms of the powers and duties, um, described for the Arts and Culture Commission. And I won't, you know, read through the entire piece, but I think it's important for us to understand what those duties are. It's to promote art activities and education, to serve an advisory group, to serve as an advisory group on arts and culture policies to the city council and city boards and commissions, to advise the council on the need for inclusion of and the role of arts and economic development, to reinforce the city's identity and civic pride through the arts and culture, to recognize and promote the importance of the arts in the city's quality of life, and to perform other duties as imposed by the city council. Now, when the report of the urban art plan was before the city council in twenty eighteen, and as you remember, it was before you a number of times, um, one of the items that was before you from the consultant in terms of the possibility and the option of the, of the city council, um, expanding the roles and the duties of the Arts and Culture Commission, and the council was very specific to say, we're going to keep it as is. Um, and we are not going to expand the role, um, and the duties of the Arts and Culture Commission. Now, if council decides otherwise, absolutely we will implement, uh, those policies within the organization and allow the Arts and Culture Commission to veer off into areas that we try to keep them in the lane that they're supposed to be in. And it's all, um, founded on the desire to want to do good for the community. That's well understood. But we have certain rules and regulations that we have to abide by based on the policies that are, that are before us. And so sometimes I think there's a, a bit of, uh, friction that may occur, um, where a commission wants to move forward in a certain way and, and staff will, will let them know what those duties are. And, um, there's at times a bit of misunderstanding in, in the midst of all that. But in terms of the way that this art piece was, was chosen, we can have Mr. Bulenikian come up and, and describe how that process, um, worked for this, uh, specific, uh, item.
Yeah, specifically for this art piece, I haven't seen anything else. This is the only one that was in our packet. And when I saw this item, I, first thing I did was look for this art piece. And this, uh, this art piece just, it just translates into Duke Magian Park. It's just very, very, uh, relevant to, to Duke Magian Park. And I really liked it by just looking at the picture. And I think it's a great idea and, uh, but I haven't seen anything else. And maybe others, you know, artists very, you know, Armenians say, your, uh, your, your personal taste has no friend. So, uh, it's, it's just, I may like something and my colleagues won't and vice versa. But in general, this piece was a great piece. And we haven't seen anything else. So when I looked at it, I said, yeah, this is Duke Magian. It, it belongs there. So I don't know how the other process is because it doesn't come to us as far as, um, I don't know, the utility boxes, the, the art pieces on utility boxes. But if this is the process, I don't know. That's why I was, I was trying to, you know, just get some more information.
Sure. By way of, by way of an example, um, and I think the utility boxes is something that all of us are more aware of because it's something that does happen, uh, in the city. And, um, more often than, than other, uh, types of projects that may come before the city council and/or, uh, the commission. Um, and this is the Arts and Culture Commission. The utility boxes, there's a call that's put out, um, for X number of utility boxes. And let's say there's twenty utility boxes that need to be painted. Um, and a number of artists will submit, uh, their art for a utility box. And depending on the timeline, uh, in terms of the opening of the application process, you may receive over a hundred artists who want to, uh, paint, uh, one of twenty, uh, utility boxes in the community. Uh, out of the hundred plus or so that come in, staff, uh, will make a determination in terms of looking through the applications and has utilized the, um, the committee process, uh, in which I believe a commissioner from the Arts and Culture Commission has the opportunity to sit with staff and look at about thirty or forty, uh, of these, uh, applications that come in after it's already been whittled down to a certain extent. And their role is to then say, yes, we are going in the correct direction in terms of what we believe these utility boxes should depict, depict in, in, um, the city of Glendale. And of the forty or so that we have before us, we will take the next twenty-five that we believe are in, um, the vision of what we believe ought to be on these utility boxes to the entire commission. And then the entire commission has that opportunity to review the twenty-five or so, and I'm just guessing on these numbers, but it's approximate, of these, uh, submissions and pick the, the top sixteen that they believe ought to go onto, um, these utility boxes. That's the process for utility boxes. And so that's very specific in terms of that project. Um, other projects may have a, a slightly different, um, process to them, but we work, uh, through that process as, as they come forward.
And is that, is that, is that, isn't that the way that we operate for almost all of the RFPs? I mean, some of the RFPs that we have for some of our developments, you know, we have, I don't know, five, ten, eighteen, sometimes twelve, uh, proposals and staff vets them out, they interview them, and then they bring three, top three for us to choose one. And staff's, you know, first choice may not be the one that we choose, but it comes back basically as a recommendation between three to five top, you know, applicants and then we choose one.
That's a good analogy.
Is it the same process?
Councilmember Garpetian, very good analogy in terms of the same concept. We put an RFP out, whether it's for street resurfacing, gutter work, um, renovation of a fire department. You get a number of, um, contractors who are going to bid on that project. Staff, you, you hire professional staff to do that work for you, will whittle through that information and provide you with, uh, a recommendation, uh, but provide you with typically more than one. But sometimes it is only one based on, uh, what you have before you. But will provide you the reasoning behind it. And ultimately, the council has the final authority in, in terms of moving forward with a particular, uh, company or, uh, one of the, the options that are before you. Very similar.
Ms. Devine?
I have a couple of questions. It's on. Oh, you can't hear me?
You can just maybe move it.
Closer to me? Okay. I'll lean in. I had asked for pictures of, uh, I, I, first of all, I wanted to know if they had looked at other artists for this project. And I know she did, uh, Franklin Elementary School. And I, I wondered if you had photos of the Franklin so the council can see in case they haven't seen those.
Yes, we have, uh, a picture of Franklin Elementary.
Thank you.
I believe Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation met with one artist, which is the current one. Uh, they met with her. They, uh, liked her work. Um, she received good recommendations from the Franklin Elementary staff administration. Plus, um, what she, the rendering that she provided, uh, fits the character of, uh, Duke Magian. And I think it'll be, it'll look really nice, especially in that amphitheater with all our programming. That will occur once when the Nature Education Center is built.
The only one that's up there is for the Duke Magian rendering.
Yes. Go to the next one.
There's, there's nothing for the next one. So that's it.
Right.
That's it.
Oh, so we didn't get a picture of Franklin? Okay. Um, so here, here's my dilemma. Um, we have, uh, a nonprofit, the Parks and Open Space, making this decision on the artwork at this park. And, uh, it comes before the council and then we have to make a decision, yes or no. We have an Arts and Culture Commission, uh, that weighs in on a lot of our other projects. And I, I would like to see them have the ability to weigh in on this project as well. Uh, if, if just to say, to look at it and say, we agree or, you know, let's tweak this or that. Um, do, for Adams, for Adams Square Mini Park, does the Arts and Culture Commission okay the artwork that goes in there?
Yes.
It does. And so this is Duke Magian Park. So it seems like, um, to me, that we, we should also have, uh, they don't have to be the total voice. I think that the Parks and Open Space, they're raising the funds for this. And I think they have every, there it is. There's Franklin. There's Franklin. Yeah. Yeah. And I, I, I've seen that and it's very nice. It's beautiful. Um, however, I, I just feel like, um, the Arts and Culture Commission should be able to at least sit in on if, if someone in our community is, is looking to do an art project, that perhaps their voices should be heard. Um, uh, and that's, that's kind of my feeling here. Uh, I, I'm not going to not okay this, the, the Duke Magian, uh, mosaic. Uh, I would like to, even though it's, it's not in my purview to do this, but if you look at the Duke Magian one, if you go back to it or forward to it or away from it or arty please. Thank you. You know, I, I just want to say that, uh, although it's not for tonight's discussion, I'd prefer to see the whole wall covered instead of just part of it and kind of coming down like it's not complete. I am just saying. So, you know, there are parts of, you know, and I'm not an artist and I'm not on the Arts and Culture Commission, but I look at that and I see things that I would tweak. And I look at the Arts and Culture Commission as somewhat of a, uh, and has an eye for this sort of thing. And I think if it's going to go in a major park like the Duke, um, I think we, we should have that kind of, uh, advise, advisory person, uh, looking at this and, um, and helping them, just, just as an, an aide, uh, to, to this, for this project. And, um, that's kind of my two cents.
Mayor Najarian, uh, councilmember Devine, uh, we are going to both, uh, the Mayor Najarian, Councilmember Devine, we are going to both the Parks Commission and Arts and Culture Commission to present the project as a known file. So we'll be going to the Parks Commission, I believe, the third Monday in October, October 21st, and then I believe the third Thursday for the Arts and Culture Commission.
Oh, okay, so they will have a voice.
I'm sorry, in November, we'll be going to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Okay, all right, well, that's great. Okay, thank you.
So it's on calendar as a known file.
But they can voice their opinion and critique the work?
It will be a known file, but they can voice their opinion, but it will be a known file. But we'll take your recommendation into consideration and cover the entire wall.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess there's a couple of questions being raised here. Aside from the specific discussion of the mural, is the role of our commissions? And do we want to expand their purview? And I've been involved in the city for, what's 96th and now? 23 years. And I was a commissioner once myself. And I was also very concerned about the limited jurisdiction that my particular commission was. That was the Transportation and Parking Commission. And many times went to the city attorney, then Jim Starbird, to ask for greater authority in looking at certain items. Speed humps on Fern Lane, for example, is something that should have gone through the commission, and it completely bypassed the commission, even though our specific duties were to handle traffic calming issues. It's every few years, the Civil Service Commission wants to expand their authority and take on greater duties. I'm not in favor of expanding the role of the commission. I think it's set forth in the code. I would, I mean, I would play this forward. Let's say that we gave the Arts and Culture Commission some authority on this one, and that we have a private organization, the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, who's doing all the fundraising for this, who's contacting the artist, who's discussing perhaps the theme of this. And what if the Arts and Culture Commission says no? And what if the artist says, hey, leave me alone, I'm the artist here, you guys back off? Then what are we faced with? We're faced with a kind of an ugly situation. Adams Square is different. I think that's more of a city involvement in that. I think the funding came entirely from the city.
I believe it's through the urban art plan as part of the temporary art display.
In the art plan. So I really want to stay away from that. I applaud the Arts and Culture Commission for wanting to take a more active role. But there comes a time where the council has to say, you know, hold your horses, we're going to do this a little differently. There are going to be art programs. And there are specific times, such as the utility box program, where we have vested with them that authority that's outside the four corners of the ordinance setting forth their duties. That's a special instance. And there may be other special instances in the future where we say we want the Arts and Culture Commission to weigh in. And I'm sure there's other instances also where we've given them certain authority to do that. But in this case, you know, Glendale Parks and Open Space, they're going to be funding this privately. This is not an all-consuming piece that is going to be, you know, visible from all corners of the city. It's a little, I'm not sure what the distance there is, 20 feet, maybe 30 feet of length by six feet, I'm thinking eight feet perhaps. It's not a centralized piece of art that is going to be in the city, that everyone is going to see. And I'm comfortable with the theme. Of course, you kind of have to squint to see what, imagine what it would be like with the mosaic, because it's not going to be as crystal clear as the rendering that we have here. And they're going to do the work to sell the nameplates for submission, so I'm okay with this as it is. Mr. Carpetian.
Look, I'm okay with it as well. I think it's following the, I mean, I'm not an artist either, but I think it's following the height of the wall, the way it's coming down. But as far as the Arts and Culture Commission, some of these utility boxes, you know, the Arts on utility boxes, when I drive by, I say, I don't like some of them, but I never raise an issue about it because we gave the authority to them to make a decision and say, this art will go in this corner. So some of them I don't like, but as I said, you know, my personal taste has nothing to do with, you know, what's good in general for our city. So I'm okay with it as well.
And if I may add, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the Arts and Culture Commission did ask for clarification in terms of their duties at their last commission meeting. And our city attorney, Mr. Garcia, is working on a report to provide to the commission to clarify for them what their duties are as set forth in the code. And I think that will just serve as another layer of clarification for the commission. And invariably, I mean, and I've been in this business for a long time, these issues come up with different commissions in terms of their desire to do good for the community at the end of the day. And it's that balance, as you all put it so well, in terms of providing that balance and their role ultimately.
Are there any other questions? So we have an item at 8B1 approving the mosaic art process at Duke Majin Wilderness Park.
I'll move the item.
Actually, there was a motion, it was, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Motion was made by Councilmember Garpetian, seconded by Agajanian.
Let's take roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Garpetian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
See as Director of Public Works regarding standardization of automated side-loading refuse truck bodies to AMREP Inc., AMREP for the purchase of new refuse trucks, parts and maintenance services. C1 is a resolution adopting AMREP as a city standard for automated side-loading refuse truck bodies, dispensing with competitive bidding for the procurement of AMREP automated side-loading refuse truck bodies from authorized dealers.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we will go directly to Mr. Emrani, Public Works Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'd like to start my presentation with a couple of quick videos showing you two different style of trash trucks that we have, just for comparison purposes. So what you're seeing in this video is the non-standardized truck, basically, that is lifting the cart. And basically, there's, the cart tilts before it even gets to the top, so there's spillage coming out from the cart, and there's a lot of vibration if you look at the cab, a lot of shaking and vibration going on for this style of trash truck. And the second video is the AMREP truck that we are recommending as far as standardization. This one, the hydraulic lift, is connected to the body. The bin is lifted upright and then dumped into the bin, and there is far less vibration to the cap, basically. So it's a much more smoother process.
Is that real time?
Yes.
Or is that in, oh.
It was real time.
That was pretty quickly.
Yeah. Wow. Our staff has done the analysis, and for the reasons that you just saw, we are recommending standardizing the body on AMREP. AMREP is currently used by several cities. City of Los Angeles uses AMREP, Redlands, San Diego, a couple of private companies have standardized on that, Waste Management and CRNR. So for those reasons, and our mechanics are much more familiar with AMREP, we think it's going to reduce the cost of the trucks basically going into the shop and reduce the wear and tear on the body. For those reasons, and they're a locally manufactured company here in Southern California, and for those reasons, we are recommending the standardization of the truck bodies on AMREP.
I'll move the item. I think it's fantastic.
Are there any, so we have a motion and a second. Any differences in the capacity, the weight capacity on the existing arm versus this conveyor? I mean, are they the same essentially?
They can carry the same, the same. And in fact, our builder, our supplier of trash trucks, is recommending standardization on AMREP because overall, they provide a much better value with no difference in really price and a much better quality and construction.
And in terms of being able to, I mean, these guys do a good job, I got to tell you. There's cars parked, and there's three cans right next to each other, and they get it just right to pick it up. Is there any, is it any worse than what we already have in terms of maneuverability and precision in capturing the container?
Mr. Mayor, I happened to do a ride-along on one of these, and it's phenomena, the precision that this newer truck can do and pick up the bins and dump it with, I wouldn't call it millimeter accuracy, but it's pretty close.
So one more question. Some cities have a little spray that disinfects the cans. Are you familiar with that? They give a shot of like Lysol or something. Are you familiar with that, or is that? We are a premier city.
Yes, we are.
We do disinf.
Have you heard of that? I mean, since we're going through this process, is that something that's being used more and more, or is that, was that just frivolous?
We do, no, that's a real thing, and we do disinfect the bins. We do disinfect the commercial bins based on the request. So if there's a request made, we go out there and, you know, we can spray it and disinfect it.
Mr. Mayor, is this an act, every time the trash gets picked up, they get sprayed?
Yeah, it was like a little, haven't heard of that?
No.
Do you get to choose the scent, or?
Counsel, we leave it to the Arts and Culture Commission. Or, well, it's a scent, scent is, you know.
Arts.
Arts.
We'll look into that.
Yes.
Comments? Mr. Agajanian?
I just, I'm not against it, but I raise my concern about using a system which is unique to this company, apparently, isn't it?
This company, yes, Mr. Agajanian, this company has patented this system, and based on our research, they're the only ones that have such a system, which is why the larger cities such as LA, San Diego, and even some of the private companies are using their system.
So basically, nobody can compete because if we want a system, nobody can provide us anything because this is, only belongs to this company. So that I'm a little bit concerned. The second thing, this has more equipment on it. And in long run, maybe it will cost us more than the old system. Of course, the benefit is that the cabin doesn't move with this system. I agree with it. But as I said, I'm just concerned. I'm not going to go against it, but I'm concerned that this is unique to one company, and there's nobody else to compete, to ask, that if they can provide something else similar to that for a lower price, let's say. Right?
Councilmember Agajanian, a couple of things. In terms of the value, the overall value, the price is very comparable to other manufacturers, even though this system provides a much better and much more efficient system. Now, in terms of the overall better construction, better value. Now, in terms of the long-term economics of it, we look at a couple of things. We look at the life cycle. So the life cycle includes not only the capital outlay, but also the O&amp;M, the operations and maintenance. So the capital cost is very comparable to the other models, and we're reducing wear and tear and the time that this needs to spend in the mechanic shop. So the overall O&amp;M is going to be less. So I would submit that the long-term value of this system is much better than the comparable systems that break down and have to constantly be monitored. One other thing that I didn't mention is that, in addition to everything else, the fuel system for AMREP is at the top of the truck. The fuel system for the other models is at the bottom. So right now, we are having an issue with these things as they go to the landfill. The fuel tanks scrape the bottom as they go through the landfill, and we're having to repair these on a regular basis, whereas with the AMREP, it's smartly put at the top so we don't have that issue. So that's one less thing we have to worry about.
You said the price is comparable. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you know the figures?
I don't have the exact figures. I can get that for you, but as I mentioned, when we talked to our supplier, they said that if they could, their recommendation to all their clients basically would be to standardize on AMREP because of the overall value in terms of construction and the life cycle benefits that it provides. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carpetian?
No, was the item moved and seconded?
Yes, it was.
Yes. Before we vote, I just want to strike my comments about delegating the aroma enhancement function to the Arts and Culture Commission. I think the city council needs to vote on that ourselves when the time comes. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Garpetian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Mayor and council, there are no cards for roll communication.
No cards? Okay, then we will be adjourning. We have new business? New business?
Yes.
New business? Mr. Carpetian?
One new business, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I moved that the matter concerning the Omega Chemical Corporation Superfund site in Los Angeles County to be compromised and settled for the full and complete sum of $46,798, and the same is hereby approved and accepted. And the Director of Financing is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution by the United States Environmental Protection Agency, a covenant not to sue, a promise that the EPA will not bring any future legal actions against the city, and contribution, protection, protection from being sued by other potentially responsible parties under CERC LA.
Is there a second?
Sec.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Garpetian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Mr. Agajanian?
Yes, I would like to put the motion.
I think that's the only item, Mr. Mayor.
That's 4E.
That was 4E.
Yeah, we took care of that already. So with the motion, we will be adjourning in the memory of Irma Hopkins.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.